This is the first Tuesday of the month with a Wapaka City Council meeting.
As usual, we'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to do the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy will read the open meeting.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks Sandy, would you take role please?
Brian Smith. Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thanks Sandy. Next, we need approval of the consent agenda. If anybody, council people or staff, have anything they want to move from the consented agenda to the regular agenda, now's the time to request that. If not, I'll need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Keeland, second by Hackett, that we approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. We have nothing to distribute for the regular agenda, I don't believe, right?
We did.
Oh, we did? Well, okay. Please.
Yeah. Okay, under number seven, letter A, proclamation declaring the week of June 5, 2017, as Wisconsin National Guard Week was uploaded to the city website today.
With that addition, I would need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Olson, I'm sorry, moved by Olson, second by Chestnut, to approve the regular agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have a proclamation declaring the week of June 5, 2017, as Wisconsin National Guard Week in the city in recognition of the 100th anniversary of Wapaka's National Guard Unit. Henry, are you going to read that?
Sure. Sandy, do you have the original?
Proclamation declaring the week of June 5, 2017, as Wisconsin National Guard Wapaka Unit Week in the city in recognition of the unit's 100th anniversary. Whereas the Wapaka Unit of the Army National Guard has a long and rich history, and whereas the unit has experienced varied duty assignments from serving during World War I and World War II, as well as responding to their fellow Wisconsin residents during national disasters such as flooding, and to mobilize in May 1933 during the Wisconsin milk strikes. And whereas the Wapaka National Guard Unit has experienced numerous reorganizations through the years, with their origins starting in 1898 during the Spanish-American War. And whereas the origination date of the unit as is known today was granted permission on June 6, 1917, to organize as Company C of the 4th Regiment with the commanding officer being Captain Clifford William Andrews and 185 men from Wapaka, Scandinavia, Waiwiga, and Iola of Wapaka County, Almond Belmont, Roch Holt, and New Hope, Portage County, and Watoma, Washeer County. And whereas the Wapaka Unit, when first organized, had no armory but conducted their operations out of the print shop located on Main Street, then to the Danes Home, 1926, next to the old armory, next to the old armory at the corner of South Washington and East Union Streets, moving finally to their current location in the Wapaka Industrial Park in 1990. Now therefore be proclaimed the 6th day of June 2017, declaring the week of June 5, 2017, as Wapaka National Guard Unit Week in the city of Wapaka in recognition of their 100th anniversary. Further, on behalf of the Wapaka Common Council, I want to thank the men and women of the unit for their service to our state and country. Also attached is a brief history of the Wapaka National Guard Unit prepared by J.J. Johnson with a complete thorough history available for review at the Holly History and Genealogy Center located in the former Carnegie Library, 321 South Main Street. Brian Smith, Mayor.
Thank you, Henry. Next, we have public input. This is an opportunity for the public to have input on a non-agenda item, council or staff also. If you have some public input on a non-agenda item, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Paul?
Yes.
I would like to do a public comment.
Sure.
Okay. This is for Justin and his crew. Never have I had so many people come up and say how wonderful Main Street is, how wonderful High Street is. People from out of town, people from work, this is just a great job. And if we can do that much with that little, you know, is there more we can do? How would it be, is there anywhere that we could do more? I can't, you know, it just says a lot about what they notice about Wapaka. I think Mary said she had people saying too, it was really nice to have the street fixed. And the alley going back to Simpsons, on the weekend, my daughter was here and I happened to see an older couple walking through, and I just waited till they were actually all the way through that alleyway to make sure because they were a little bit unsteady going through there.
Well, thank you very much. Our guys take a lot of pride in what they do, so that goes a long way when they hear that, especially from the aldermen, council members. We can do more with more budget. That's about it. So we're constrained by that, and we try to do the best we can with allocating our funds, you know, not just to roadways but to everything, well, different aspects of roadways, you know, paint, signs, gravel, the whole nine yards, so, yeah, so more funding and we can do more.
Is there anything left over from, like, Lake Street or any of that? In the capital fund?
Well, Lake Street project hasn't started, and once we get that underway, we'll probably have a better tab on that, you know, and that's borrow money, and I've talked with Kathy that if there's a little extra left over, it can be used for transportation funding, whether it's maintenance, construction, or design work.
Okay. Well, thank you, they did an awesome job, and it's appreciated by many.
You're most welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks Lori. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. Item A is a presentation of the 2016 annual audit by Johnson Block &amp; Company. Kathy, you want to make introductions or?
Tonight, we have Jay Bennett, a partner with Johnson Block, our external auditors. They completed the city's financial audit on May 11, and the audited financial statements are in the packet. My report and this item starts on page 69 of the packet, and I'll have Jay go through the presentation.
Good evening, everybody. I did a PowerPoint presentation, I hope you have that then also, so I won't be going through the full audit report, which is 60-some pages, kind of give you some condensed highlights. You know, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me, or if you have questions afterwards, you know, Kathy has my contact info, happy to answer any questions that I can. So we did the audit for this last year, for 2000, this year ended December 31, 2016. The city did receive an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest audit opinion that you can get. There's different types of opinions, there's a modified, which means except for something not being presented correctly, an adverse or disclaimed opinion also, so, you know, as far as our knowledge, everything is fairly presented in the financial statements. So it's the highest audit opinion you can get, which helps when you go out for bond issues, debt issues, those types of things. All the journal entries have been reviewed and approved by Kathy and management. There are some separate documents that are, would be at the end of the audit report, they're not numbered, I will talk about those at the end of the presentation, that's some separate communication that is intended for governments, city council, I will touch on some of the highlights of that also. But I always encourage you to read those or look those letters over. Getting to page three of the financial highlights, just the cash balances as of year end, total cash balance of the city, including utilities and all the other, all funds combined, was roughly 5.8 million. General Fund had a cash balance of 922,0136 as of the end of the year. Water and Sewer had some good cash balances, they had some debt reserves also. Ending balance for the water utility in the operation account was 1,251,573, and the sewer had 1,164,505. And then the restricted, the debt reserves are for the bond payments. So it's kind of money that you have to set aside as a reserve to make debt payments in case the utilities were financially distressed. But for the year ended December 31, 2016, overall, all funds across the city did have a net loss this last year. That loss was $697,351. Previous year you had a small loss, was $3,654. So for the last two years, you've, overall, you've had a loss, so you've, you know, spent more, had more expenditures than what you've taken in on revenue. Actually, for this last year, the general fund, Fund 100, if you're in your budgets, had a slight increase of $11,000. TIF 4 and TIF 8 both had losses. TIF 4 loss was 262,599. TIF 8's loss was 149,387, and that's after some transfers from the other funds. Debt Service had a loss for the year of 360,423. Part of that's due to some debt refinancing. Paid off some debt, actually, and I have a, later on in the presentation, kind of a summary of your debt for the year. Water Utility also experienced a loss for 2016. Small loss, but it was $7,428. Year previous, it had a net income of almost $90,000. Sewer Utility did have a positive or a net income for 2016, and that was roughly $80,000, Moving on to page four of the presentation, which is a pie graph, just kind of gives you, shows you where your general fund balance is. There's different classifications of fund balance. Non-spendable, which means can't spend it, it's prepayments, advances, those types of things, it won't get expensed in the future. Restricted, which is restricted for purposes for outside of legislation or donor purposes, it's not really readily available for a lot of just general city operations. Then assigned, which is your designating funds to spend down for something, and then unassigned. The unassigned has a negative fund balance as of year end of 6,442,488. And most of that comes from TIF 8, which, you know, hasn't performed really well since its inception. Note 8 has more detail on the fund balance amounts, if you care to read that note also. Page 5, which is another graph here, kind of a bar graph that shows you just your general fund trend and fund balance for the general fund. This is just the general fund only. You can kind of see in 2002, or 2012, it was almost 2.1 million, 28,862. As of the end of 2016, it was 1,475,594. So it has decreased the last few years, but this last year, again, it had a little positive increase of $11,000 roughly. The unassigned fund balance for the general fund is about 29% of your budgeted expenditures, which was, falls within your, but you have a general fund balance policy that falls within that range, so, you're still, you know, your fund balance, your policy is to maintain at least a 20%, minimum fund balance. Page 6, is another pie chart, just kind of gives you some totals of where your revenues are at for the last year, comparison to '16 and '15. The biggest part of the city's revenues is the property taxes. Roughly 60% of your revenue comes from property taxes. The next biggest portion of the pie would be the intergovernmental, that's your state aid, shared revenue, general transportation aids, those types of revenues. They account for, you know, majority of your income. Your biggest intergovernmental revenues is the highway aids, which was 367,000 last year. Shared taxes and restraint aid, shared revenue, which is a little over a million, 1,45,224. Some county library aid, 387,181, and taxi cab subsidy that you guys get, 264,869. You know, again, the revenues overall between the two years are pretty close, roughly for '16 it was 9.4 million, for '15 it was like 9.3 million roughly. Page 7, another bar chart for your property taxes, just kind of showing you where your levy's at, which you guys probably are pretty aware of, you know, with levy limits, you can't really raise property taxes much more than what's allowed by the state of Wisconsin. Kind of shows you started out in 2012 at 4.9 million roughly, and in '16 it's 5.3, 5.4 million. And between '15 and '16 it went up, you know, less than a percent, it's like 70.75%. Over the average of those five years, it's gone up 2.1%, so not a lot of increase in your levy. Page 8, trend in your shared revenues and expenditure restraint programs. Again, you see it pretty flat there. You know, revenues went up a little bit this last year by about $7,000, but, you know, in the last five years, it's actually 10,000 below what it was back in 2012. So, they've kind of capped, you know, state aid, so that's why it's just staying fairly flat. For 2017, your shared revenue expenditure restraint payments are going to be 895,5868 and 146,808, for a total of 100, or 1,42,676. So again, fairly flat for revenue from the shared revenue expenditure restraint. Page 9 is a pie graph of your expenditures. Gives you a comparison between 2016 and 2017. Biggest part of your expenditures for this last year was debt service payments, principal and interest payments. Part of that's due to the debt refinance. You know, you issued some new debt, state trust fund loans, and paid off some CDA bonds, roughly, I think it was like 3.1 million, and that's why you see the change in the debt service, excuse me, expense between the two years of roughly 3 million. Otherwise, everything, for the most part, expenditures stayed fairly consistent to where they have been in the last few years, if you factored that debt, those debt refinancing payments and took that out, so. Your next biggest expenditure would be public safety at 13%, and then public works at 12%. Page 10, changes in long-term obligations. Again, this kind of shows where the borrowing has been for the city in this last year. Your general obligation debt, total of bonds and notes payables at year end was 11.3 million. You paid off those CDA revenue bonds for, which was 4.2 million this last year. So overall, your debt, your general obligations went down about 2.7 million between the two years. So you have been paying off some debt. Your debt limit, your general obligation debt limit, you're allowed to levy or borrow up to 5% of your general obligation debt, or equalized value, I should say, for general obligation debt. So that debt limit was 19,762,440, and the debt that you have outstanding was 11,332,533 that's subject to that limit, so. You have about 40%, a little over 40% of your debt capacity remaining to borrow for street projects or new projects that you might have coming up. That does not include the debt of the utilities. It's a business-type activities, so, and that debt was roughly 6 million at the end of the year. Excuse me. Page 11 of the presentation, this is, you know, covers those other matters, those audit communication letters that I was talking to, or talking about a little bit early on. So there's some findings. We have a significant deficiency for preparation of the financial statements, which is common. 99.9% of our clients always have that comment. It's just take some expertise to prepare the financial statements, convert them from the fund statements that you see in your budgets to the government-wide statements and do all the notes and everything, so, fairly common, just pointed out. Sick leave policy, I've had this comment for a few years. Right now, the city's policy is that employees have the option of either using accumulated sick leave for health insurance or for a sick leave payout. And if you have that option, IRS has come out and said it's a constructive receipt issue, and even if they take the health insurance, it's a taxable event. So, city pays, the employee has to pay income tax, wages to them, FICA tax, city also has to pay FICA tax in that case. If you took away the option, if there's no option there, then the health insurance would not be subject. If they'd used it for health insurance, and that was the, and you made that the only option, then it wouldn't be taxable compensation. So just want to point that out, it can kind of, sometimes municipalities, if they don't know that and it comes up, and they just run it through as a payment, not through payroll, seeing where some municipalities have gotten caught by the IRS, comes in penalties, interest, all those types of things, so, just want to be careful with that, and that may be something you might want to look at possibly changing. The compensated absence's liability, it's in the financial statements and the government-wide statements, is roughly 900,000, just to give you a heads up on what that amount is. Payroll liability reconciliation, this last year, there were some adjustments to the payroll liabilities, they weren't totally reconciled at year end. I think we ended up adjusting the health insurance liability by about 46,000, I think, for some prepayments. But it's one of the things that you want to be careful of and make sure, those are getting reconciled on a monthly basis. You'll see it from time to time, UW system had this a few years ago where they overpaid health insurance for employees that were no longer there, the wrong types of health insurance coverage, the wrong retirement amounts, those types of things, so, that's one of the things you want to be careful of. Water loss, again, the water had a slight loss this last year of 7,500, $7,400, not a huge amount. The water does have some, you know, cash, operating cash in there, and reserve, but the last time you guys raised the rates was in 2011. So it's been several years. I think the full rate case was sometime before that, maybe in 2008. There is a rate of return that, the PSC authorizes, the Public Service Commission is the one that sets your water rates, they authorize a certain rate of return based on your fixed assets. So you're generating the income to pay for repairs, replacements, all those types of things, so you don't have to go out and necessarily borrow for any major repairs like a well rehab or water tower painting, those types of things, so. One of the things I usually kind of recommend is that, from time to time, you can do the simplified rate case, which is a 3% increase in water rates. It's fairly cost-effective, doesn't really cost too much to do it, and you can, you know, I recommend a lot of times from municipalities to do it every second year or third year just to try to keep up with inflation. When you do a full-blown rate case, and you know, you see a large jump in water rates, residents tend to get a little unhappy about that, and also, it costs quite a bit more for those full-blown rate cases. You're probably going to pay a consultant, you know, 2,000 to 4,000 bucks for that, and you're going to probably pay the same thing for the Public Service Commission. Your simplified rate case is going to be probably a couple hundred dollars for the PSC, so, that may be something you want to consider, since it has been at least seven years, I think, or six years since you've raised the rates. We'd like to thank Kathy and her staff for all the help that they've given us. Does anybody else have any other questions?
I do have a question. On your page 6, our package number 75, it's the pie chart of the revenues, and what struck me there was the amount of miscellaneous.
Sure.
Revenue, nearly 8%. And I'm always bothered when I see something called miscellaneous, because it's a catch-all for a lot of different things, and I'd be more concerned if it were expenses rather than revenues. But I'd like a further breakdown of what the miscellaneous is. Understand, part of it is interest?
Some of it would be interest. Other things that are in there are rent, from like the Fulton properties, there's three or four properties that you guys get rent on. Another big part of that was some donations. There was, I had some notes here myself for that, because it went up between the two years, so I was kind of ready. Library donations, I think, came in at like 60 grand, there were some police donations for some equipment, I think, for another 30,000 or 40,000 dollars.
The insurance dividend?
Insurance dividend would be in there. I think the rent was about 65,000 of that amount also.
All right, that answers it. Thank you.
You're right.
Anybody else for Jay or Kathy? Okay, thank you Jay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item B of unfinished business is 2017 engagement letter for Johnson Block &amp; Company Incorporated. Kathy?
Because we have controlled our costs with the audit and are doing a lot more of the reporting and the work papers, we have received a 0% increase if we would extend the contract again with Johnson Block for the 2017 audit. I'm always looking for a way to save some money, so, my recommendation is to continue with the engagement of Johnson Block for the 2017 audit, and then do requests or proposals for the '18 audit next June, and see what the market would bear. It's a bigger impact on our staff if we did change auditing firms, and we seem to be very efficient right now with Johnson Block, so, I would rather not see an increase in my budget next June.
Mary?
No, I just.
Would like to make a motion.
Second?
Moved by Hackett, second by Hagan, that we approve the 2017 audit engagement letter with Johnson Block &amp; Company in an amount not to exceed $28,000, which includes the city's utilities. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, I'm sorry, it's a roll call vote, sorry.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Item C on our unfinished business is a city hall office furniture replacement purchase, and this is Kathy again.
Thank you.
Thank you Jay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I did what the council had directed me to do and compared the office furniture bids, and after talking to Henry, we decided that there is no urgency in doing this, and we would rather be a lot more transparent and just take this out to bid, since we have a better idea as to what pricing for the equipment is, and we'll go out for bid later on this fall for it. So I'm not recommending any action on this item.
Okay, so no vote? Okay. All right, thanks Kathy. New business. Item A is application for temporary Class B, and Class B retailer's license, summer Serenada at St. Mark's on June 10, July 15, July 29, and August 12, 2017, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. Henry, this has your name on it. Henry, this has your name on it.
Yes, I believe there's some representatives, I see, I see Ms. Pfeiffer here. So I don't know if you want to talk about the event a little bit, Patricia, before we go into it?
Carolyn arranged it, I'll let her speak.
Okay, Carolyn in? I don't know.
Yeah.
Carolyn Smith.
Carolyn.
Hi. St. Mark's has this beautiful garden that we...
Ma'am, please talk into the microphone.
Okay. St. Mark's owns a property that used to be next to the old food pantry. Well, the food pantry outgrew it, so, and the building decayed, so we knocked it down, and we have this beautiful garden out there. It's non-denominational, the only thing in it would be the cross, other than that, there is no other religious thing. But we wanted to use this garden throughout summer events, so we contacted the Wapaka Arts Board, and I talked to Marcy Reynolds, and she helped me set up with Emily these events, summer serenata, and the date's listed. We want to serve wine, wine coolers, and hors d'oeuvres, but we need to charge for them, because the concert is free, and it would be donations for the concert, and we'd like to sell the wine. So, my dear friend Pat took the test, and she passed the test, and now we need the liquor license for these events.
I think the one point to make is the premise is, is the garden.
It would be in the garden park.
And what will you be doing with restrooms?
We have the church fellowship hall that has the bathroom. We have parking, we have water in the garden. It's like, called the garden sink, there's no, it's just water from like, from the hose, you know, washing and, everything would be disposable, and it would be packed up by the church group committee that is holding these functions.
And we're not recommending or requiring any kind of fence, I think, because it's the middle of the afternoon, it's two hours each event.
Two hours sit and listen to classical music. I'm not sure you all like classical music, but it is really soothing.
Be nice for the town.
You know, we think that the garden is an attraction for the city, and we want to work with all the community organizations to utilize the garden to attract more people to our city on weekends during the summer.
We have talked, we have talked with the historical board, and they want, when they have their city tours, they would like to start there, they would like to have, we have a labyrinth in there, and we want people to, it's not just a big patio, it's a labyrinth, and there's meditation to walk around in this circle, and different thoughts to walk the labyrinth. And so there will be other things in the future, but I'm not sure we'll be selling liquor at these other ones.
Okay, thank you.
These are all Saturdays, by the way.
Any questions?
I just, I just want to mark, I went by there, and I looked in from the street, and it looked very, I was very curious about it. So it's good to hear what this is.
Oh, we have pamphlets. Did you get this?
Yes.
Okay, you have it, well, that's what we're, and that will be on the, it's on the Wapaka Arts Board, and around town, wherever we can put them.
Paul, I encourage you to stop and walk through the garden. You know, we would like people to kind of have their lunch there, city workers walk down and have their lunch, and we really want it to be not a St. Mark's thing, but a community garden.
It's another green space in between Main Street and South Park. There's a lot of people walking around, they do stop, they come in there when they're walking their dogs down the street, and we have the pavilion, so it's like a shelter too. And so, it's, you know, come bring your lunch and sit during your lunch hour.
Any more questions or comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve. Second.
Moved by Hagan, second by Keeland, that council approve of the application of a Class B, Class B retailers license for summer serenata at St. Mark's on June 10th, July 15th, July 29th, and August 12th, 2017, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, request by Living the Wapaka Way to hold the Wapaka Saturday Farmers Market on every Saturday, running from June through October, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Hello, my name is Bridget Forgette, and I'm a vendor at the Wapaka Farmers Market, and this is the fifth year that I will be vending there with my husband. We sell fresh produce, eggs, and we sell lamb, in addition to some other things here and there, from our diversified small farm. We live in the town of Lind, and we have about 50 acres there. We really enjoy selling at the Wapaka Farmers Market, this is our only farmers market that we sell at. Our children attend the Wapaka School District, and I'm a substitute teacher there as well. And I am also a city employee, I work at the library part-time as the exhibit room coordinator. Just to give you everybody an idea who I am, and we would like to continue with our Saturday Farmers Market, which is a group of vendors, and we are vendor-managed, setting up on the grass in front of the library from 9:00 to 2:00 every Saturday that the weather allows, from May to October. And this is the same set of vendors that have been doing it for the past five years, with a few vendors coming and going, so it does change a little bit. Including this year, we have some mushrooms and, from a vendor in Antigo, but they sell other things too, besides what I've sold, there are vendors that sell canned goods, and hopefully, in the future, this year we might see baked goods too, depending on what kind of legislation we see go through, Wisconsin state legislation. The Living the Wapaka Way is a sort of a new coalition between representatives from the Farmers Market, myself, the Extension Office, Theta Care, and the city. So there are a bunch of people working together to enhance the Saturday market and create more of an event market. And there will be some events throughout the summer, one in June, one in July, and one in August, to promote healthy living. So these are outdoor activities like yoga, disc golf, and taekwondo. Does anybody have any questions?
How many vendors are there typically on a Saturday?
Well, when the market opens, which is going to be June 24th, is the grand opening, anywhere between six to eight regular vendors, with about two to three extra vendors that will come part-time. Thank you.
Bridget, there was a request in the letter for occasional closure of Fulton Street, depending on size, so I think council, just be aware of that. I don't believe you feel it's going to be every Saturday, and you want to try to build some capacity, and if it happens, it would be more likely, maybe later on in the summer as, you know, more produce, maybe more vendors. Want to figure out how to coordinate that with you? So that is in the request, but I think it's manageable for us to help with that and make that work.
Yes, as a volunteer market manager, I do own and have, not ownership, but I have in my possession a few of the orange cones from the city that we've used to block off spaces as we've seen fit, right along Fulton Street, where there is already vendor spaces, but we would ask for maybe an additional space to create the option in case we do find more vendors to fill those spaces, or that we feel like our activities are going to take up more space on the lawn, and we want to move vendors over into the Fulton Street space between Main Street and Jefferson. But it would not block anything, of course.
Bridget, you're aware that on June 17th and August 19th, there are events, Strawberry Fest and Arts on the Square, and that you wouldn't have access to that space at that time?
Yeah, the Arts on the Square is very friendly to the Farmers Market, and they actually advertise that our Farmers Market will be there, so we sort of add to their space, but yes, we're, the vendors will not be set up for Strawberry Fest on the 17th, that's right.
Any more comments or questions? Motion? Or Brennan?
We don't need to debate this tonight, but I do see in the request that they're looking to put up advertising or signage as well, what that looks like, or, you know, because we do have some ordinances as relates to temporary signage or anything else, so we don't need to debate it tonight. The council made a buck, Bridget, I'd like to sit down and talk to you about that.
Yeah, I would love to see what the council says as far as what you would like to see advertising for the Farmers Market, because we are sort of like a public service, but most of the vendors are not city residents, and this is not the location of our business, that we do need to find a way to promote the market with some signage that's appropriate and that's approved by the city council.
So Brennan, you're going to handle that between you and Bridget?
Yep, I'll probably have to bring it back, but yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. There's nothing else, take a motion to approve or disapprove this.
I move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Keeland, second by Whitman, that council approves of the request by Living the Wapaka Way to hold Wapaka Saturdays Farmers Market on every Saturday, with the exceptions noted, running from June through October, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., which requires the use of lawn space in front of the public library, closing East Fulton Street possibly, and permission to put up signs advertising the Farmers Market on library lawn during the summer months pending discussions between Bridget and Brennan and council approval. All those in favor just say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, motion carries. Thanks, Bridget.
Thank you very much for your time.
Item C is ordinance number 01-17, 2017, an ordinance to establish procedures and criteria for allowing alternative forms of sworn testimony at the Board of Review hearings. This is a first reading, and I think Henry's going to read it, correct?
Yes, sir. Do you want me to read it, or just hit the highlights?
Thank you.
This is on page 168, talking with Sandy, we were quite surprised, this is our first ordinance of the 2017 calendar year. I have to go every two years to be certified for border review training, and took part a couple weeks ago and learned that this law was passed, and it is a state law for border reviews to comply with, that there's some new procedures for people wanting to appeal their assessment to be able to file their appeal, and to actually appear before the border review, not in person. So these kind of lay out the procedures, and it would be, the timing is such that our border review isn't until probably July 12th, and so we have time to get this adopted, so it would go into effect for the Board of Review proceedings for this year. Again, this was a boilerplate ordinance that was prepared for the people in the training, so. I think, John, I think you got a copy of it, if you had any questions or comments about it. I think it's pretty straightforward, there's forms that Department of Revenue provides for this that would be used for the people making the appeals. Just administrative.
Thanks, Henry. Questions, comments? Okay, I think this will be on next month's agenda, will be on the consent agenda? Okay. Thank you. Item D, resolution number 1387, Airport Six-Year Project Plan. Alderman, Hagan?
On page 16970, you'll find the resolution 1387, the Airport Six-Year Project Plan. The only thing that is differing from this in the past was, in year 2018, you'll see reconstruct Crosswind Runway 1331, this is recommended by the Bureau of Aviation, because it is deficient, other than that, and everything else is moved back here, so that's really the only change associated with this. I would move for recommendation.
Moved by Hagan, second.
Second.
Second by Chestnut, that council approve resolution number 1387, 2017, Airport Six-Year Project Plan. It's going to be a roll call vote.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
And Paul Mayo?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Item E, we'll go back to Paul here, aircraft hangar lot lease between City of Wapaka and Susan Anderson and Beth Anderson.
I don't know if I can stand the excitement of two agendas, but I'll do my best. This is just to clean up the lot lease, because it is still in Pete's name, and they are just changing it to Susan and Beth.
All right. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval. It's all moved. Moved by Fair, second by Peterson, that council approves of the aircraft hangar lot lease between the City of Wapaka and Susan Anderson and Beth Anderson. Roll call vote again.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Moving to item F, resolution number 1388, Compliance Maintenance Resolution. Justin.
Thank you, Paul. On page 178 is the resolution, followed by the CMAR, or Compliance Maintenance Resolution from, this is basically our wastewater treatment plant's report card for the year, reporting to the DNR. The resolution just states that we are going to basically fill out this annual report and send it off to the DNR and advertise it within a newspaper. This happens every year, you should be somewhat familiar of it. I guess the high points of it is that, once again, we got a perfect score, that's at least two years in a row that I know of. The Jeff Dyer has done an excellent job down there, fulfilling our requirements and our permitting, and I'd like to point out on page 195, which is actually the financial area of the report, which was completed by Kathy, our reserves were reported at just over $400,000. That's short, much shorter than what's recommended, however, we did gain in that area, so we are making strides to beef up our reserves, and with the help of Kathy and the guys down at the staff, we're making our strides, so without further ado, I'm looking for approval of this resolution.
So moved, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, I heard Steve. Moved by Whitman, second by Hackett, that we approve of resolution number 1388, Compliance Maintenance Resolution. This is another roll call vote.
No further discussion?
Oh, go ahead, discuss.
Thank you. Just getting back to that, that page in regards to the financial, it says ending balances of December 31st is 435,403. And then down on question 3.3, it says what should be, 1.834 million, is that, am I correct, and there were 1.4-ish shy? You are correct.
You are correct. At one time, you did have that money, however, you have been, you, in the past, you used it as debt service payments.
Oh, okay.
So you depleted your equipment reserve fund to pay the debt, that 20-year bond, instead of raising your rates to pay the debt service, so now...
So it wouldn't be a bad idea to review our rates in the future?
We probably should be looking at it, however, we do have the chain district now giving us money towards plant and reserve, equipment and maintenance, so that should help in starting to build up that fund. It'll take a while, but... It'll take a while, but I would say that it'll get there without raising the rates. But I would strongly suggest that only that equipment reserve fund be used for like emergency type of repairs, so that we do build it up, so that we're more compliance with the DNR.
On a related topic, is the veterans home anywhere near looking at having our customer?
I have had no response from the engineers that I'm working with, so I'm still trying to follow up with them of where they're at with the entire project. So I'm hopeful by the next council meeting, I'll have an update for you guys.
Thank you.
Any more questions for discussion? All right, now we're going to vote.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Item G, Resolution Number 1389, Amendment of 2017 Budget to Comply with Expenditure Restraint Program. Kathy.
Thank you, Paul. During our 2017 budget process, the Department of Revenue for the state required municipalities to account for our distribution of our tax levy. I was in communication with Andrea at the DOR and had told her about us accounting also for our transfer of funds for the utilities in amending our budgets. She had said that that sounded okay and to do it. So when I did file our expenditure restraint, she went, "No, I don't like that, so don't do that," which is typical DOR right now. So to fix the problem and comply with expenditure restraint, our budget can't go over 1.8%. So I'm removing the $319,000 we have in contingency and adjusting the one position with benefits for Public Works to be directly charged to the water utility. That will qualify us for expenditure restraint. If you would do, when we get to the budget, what'll end up being the actual will show the transfers from the accounts that actually will give us that $319,000 contingency. So it's just a budgeting amendment, but the actual's going to be showing that what we actually are transferring over to the utility, so we'll be in compliance. I didn't want to jeopardize $136,000 worth of shared revenue, expenditure restraint revenue, to do whatever accounting that she wanted to do, so.
Thanks, Kathy. Questions or comments? Motion.
Second.
Moved by Hagan, second by Pachatsky, that we approve of resolution number 1389, an amendment of the 2017 budget to comply with expenditure restraint program. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Item H is License Report Number 1363, Class B Intoxicating Liquor Licenses, Class B Fermented Malt Beverage Licenses, Class A Beer and Intoxicating Liquor Licenses, Class B Fermented Malt Beverage Licenses, and Class C Wine Licenses. I think there's a long list of establishments.
Yeah.
Henry, you got it?
Sure, yeah, it's that time of year. Our license year is July 1, and we begin in April, early May, to get all the application information out. I would say, and I failed to ask Barb, who does a great job of keeping this organized, by the way, that we probably got 80 or so percent of them in. There'll be stragglers, maybe 90%, but the next three action items are really kind of all related, right? These establishments not only have to be licensed, many of them have the amusement devices, you'll have to take them, I'm sure, as separate motions, and then the next one has to do with our bartenders. And again, the premises, you're approving this based on our police chief, fire chief, building inspector, and health inspector going around to the premise and making sure they all check out, and then pending background checks. So we will do that work, and I anticipate that we'll have some more on next meeting's agenda, just to clean it all up.
All right.
Take a motion we approve?
Second.
Moved by Hackett, second by Peterson, that council approves of license report number 1363, Class B Intoxicating Liquor Licenses, Class B Fermented Malt Beverage Licenses, Class A Beer and Intoxicating Liquor Licenses, Class B Fermented Malt Beverage Licenses, and Class C Wine Licenses pending the inspections by the police chief, fire chief, building inspector, and health inspector, and background checks. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. As Henry said, the next item is kind of related. It's item I, License Report Number 1364, Arcade Amusement Device Licenses. I think that's fairly self-explanatory.
Move to approve 1364.
Second.
Moved by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that council approve of License Report Number 1364, Arcade Amusement Device Licenses. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item J is License Report Number 1365, Operators Licenses. Those are bartenders licenses, and it's a big list.
Move to approve 1365.
Second.
Moved by Peterson, second by Whitman, that council approve of License Report Number 1365, Operators Licenses, pending background checks and payment of any fines owed to the city. Any discussion?
I'd like to just enter a quick comment, because staff has talked about our charge for these licenses. I think you're going to see something in a couple meetings. We are losing cost on the charges that we charge. I think we charge seven bucks for background check, but it's costing us more than that, and we have to advertise, so we're working on bringing forward a proposal, but you'll see something, you know, probably by the end of the summer on this to get it in place so we have it. We, I do believe, are on the low end of the fees for this, so.
What, like $25 now or something? I think that's what it is.
Yeah, I know the background check alone is costing us like 11 now.
27.
Okay, $27, yeah, all right. Well, it's 25 at one time. All right, any other discussion? Okay, I need a motion then.
Make a motion to approve 1365.
Moved by Whitman.
We did this already.
We did?
Yeah. Peterson and Whitman.
Oh, we did.
I interrupted by making a comment.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Double down on that one.
All right.
Good enough for next year.
True.
Give us a super motion.
I apologize. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item K is License Report Number 1366, Scrap Dealer Licenses.
Well, this is one, if you remember, about a year ago, council adopted an ordinance that we would just manage these through the clerk's office if they were renewals, and if there was a new one, the plant commission would still handle it, so you could deal with any kind of site issues. So this, I think, is the first year under the new procedure, so.
Somebody want to make a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll move to approve License Report Number 1366.
Second. Moved by Olson, second by Pachatsky, to approve License Report Number 1366, Scrap Dealer Licenses pending inspections by the Community and Economic Development Department. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Last item here is Decision to Cancel or Reschedule the Tuesday, July 4, 2017 Council Meeting. Yeah, I suppose we shouldn't meet on July 4th, huh? Is, so we have the option of canceling or rescheduling. Is there anything that is time-sensitive or urgent that we would need to meet?
I reached out to department heads. I've not heard anything back, so I'm assuming there isn't, that we can time it and just deal with the next meeting on the 18th.
Okay.
I think the mayor just wanted us to poll the council to see what your thoughts were.
If you reschedule, it has to go till the next day. You only have one choice on a reschedule. What would be on the 5th?
So, okay, so we would...
The ordinance says if it falls on a holiday, you reschedule it to the next day.
But they do have the option to cancel it.
Or else you can cancel.
Yeah. What do you want to do?
Can I make a motion we cancel?
Second. All right. Moved by Hackett, second by Keeland, that we cancel the July 4 meeting, scheduled council meeting. Any further discussion?
Would we be subject to, if something came up, to have it on the call?
Yeah, you'd always have that opportunity, I suppose, if something came up, yeah.
So it'd have to be...
It'd probably just, we'd just call the special council meeting and maybe do it later in the week or the following Tuesday, next Tuesday, 11th or something.
Henry polled all the department heads, though. It doesn't seem like there's anything on the horizon, but you never know.
Right.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Last item on the agenda here is presentation by Josh Warner on Wapaka Online and Future Endeavors. You're up, Josh.
I thought it'd be a good time to give an update about what's going on with Wapaka Online. You know, some of you might not be too familiar with it. I think we've got a few customers in the room, and outside, maybe seeing a little bit of information each month from my report, not much gets talked about it. And the other reason for giving an update tonight is there's some potential projects we're working on, a possible grant application that you'll learn more about at the next meeting, and I thought giving some background where we're at and what's going on would be good, leading up to that, leading up to those potential projects we're looking at. So just a quick history, Wapaka Online was started 2001, 2002, and its initial purpose was to provide internet into the business park here in the city. The other providers were unwilling to go into that area, and to this day, there's still limited choices out there. You don't have your traditional DSL or cable internet available. It's basically T1 or fiber at several hundred dollars a month per business, so the businesses that can get Charter or AT&amp;T for about a hundred bucks don't have that option out there. So we've gone full circle. We're still out there providing probably internet to about 50% of the businesses out in that business park. Wapaka Online saw steady growth over the 2000s. The initial cost of equipment back in that first decade to do a typical customer, four to $600, right now, we can do a typical customer for $60 to $180. So the cost of equipment and the quality of equipment has kind of traded places over time. For our in-city customers, we're a much lower cost alternative to the other providers. We've become more business-focused since our grant, and we've got high rural availability where other options are limited. Just a little bit about our pricing. It breaks out to pound where customers locate it. We have in-city pricing, we've got rural pricing, and we've got a business class service. And I think back when this was all started, the difference between the in-city and rural pricing was, I think at the time, maybe some tax money was used, so that was the justification that in-city customers got a lower rate than out-of-city, and today's justification is it costs us quite a bit more to operate in the rural areas. Our staff has to use more time, more travel time to get to customers. We've got a system of different towers around, so that's more equipment we have to maintain, so the farther from the city, the higher the cost to us to operate. So our customers have their standard rate that includes maintenance and basically equipment insurance, and then they get charged $3 per additional 1-meg increment they have, so we customize the speed to match with the customer needs. There's no pre-made tiers or paying for more than they might get. We work with each customer to get them the right amount, and they're only charged for that. A little bit about our service. For upload speeds, which is sending out data, we've got some of the fastest upload speeds available. All of our customers can ask for a static IP address, public static IP address, at no additional cost, which is pretty rare, especially for residential internet. The name-your-own-speed pricing I just talked about, if a customer, if we find out a customer location, they can get up to 12 meg, and that customer only wants eight, we can work with them to get that, just what they need. Basically, no monthly data limits, we'll use all the data you want. Some of our highest customers use a half terabyte plus per month. We usually have anywhere from 12 to 18 customers each month that are close to that half terabyte mark. We've had some that 800, 900 gigs, some of our high customers, so there are some customers that use a lot of data. Unlike cellular and satellite, they don't get cut off, they don't get charged anymore. We've got no content restrictions, it's wide open. You know, the only limit is how much speed you're provisioned for. There's a no-term commitment, you can leave any time. All customers are offered a 15-day, no-fee trial period, so if they try it out and don't like it, they're not charged anything. We don't charge for service calls, and we typically go beyond what a typical ISP would do. We help out with routers and some basic computer problems, which most ISPs wouldn't assist with. And the equipment we provide, it's replaced, upgraded at any time at no cost to the customer with one exception, if they purposely damage their equipment, which it's rare, but it happens once in a while if they do something to damage it. Outside that, if they need a better piece of equipment because of other issues, they get that at no cost to them. That's part of their service fee they pay each month. A little bit of our rates, there's been no price increase in more than six years. If you remind to 2011, that's the last time I've got some pricing data for, for $54.95 a month, customers could get 1 meg of service. Today, $54 gets you 4 meg of service, or $45 a month gets you 1 meg. It's been important to me that we don't raise our rates. We've done a number of things over the past handful of years to provide more value to our customers for the same price they're paying, so as we get more bandwidth from Charter, we'll up the speed our customers get for about the same price they're paying. And for wireless ISP, if we compared other wireless ISPs, we're pretty competitive for what we're charging, so we're in a pretty good spot, and I think our customers are happy that we haven't raised anything unless they've requested more speed in which they have to pay more money for. But outside that, our rates have stayed the same. I know this map's kind of hard to see, but all those little kind of red specks on there are locations where we have a tower. Those towers may be a privately-owned tower, it might be a silo, it might be someone that's got a pretty tall roof and a strategic location. And the way our system operates, everything starts here at City Hall, we've got the tower out back, and from there, it distributes to either the Shambol or Mount Tom Water Tower or the Mount Tom Communications Tower. And customers can connect to one of those locations, or if they can't see that location, they may connect to a more localized, what we call a POP, Point of Presence, that's in their neighborhood to get internet service. So all these red locations all over the map all connect back to one of the water towers or the communications tower to get internet out to those areas. So how does wireless internet work? As I said, originates here at City Hall, goes to one of our three main towers, and it distributes to neighborhood POPs. Customers may connect to one of the originating towers or one of those POPs. And the reason for that large network, wireless internet, fixed wireless internet, depends on line of sight or near line of sight. So if you're buried behind a hill or a lot of trees and don't have a line of sight back to one of those towers, we can't provide service, so that's why we've got all those POPs all over to get around those hills and trees to get into those areas where a majority of people wouldn't see something back here in the city. Our Point of Presence, our POPs basically have two pieces of equipment, a backhaul radio that connects back to our network, and then an access point, and that's what our customers connect to. And we operate in two different frequency bands, 2.4 gigahertz, and that's typically what our customers are in, and 5.8 gigahertz, that's what our backhaul network is to distribute the internet out to those locations. Each customer, they've just got an antenna and a radio typically mounted on a roof, maybe a tower, chimney, that sort of thing, and they see one of our locations, and that's kind of how the internet gets to them. Over 2015, 2016, we were awarded a State of Wisconsin PSC Broadband Expansion Grant, and we used that... and we used that to basically pay, play catch-up and get our whole network up to current standards, which we completed and made a huge difference in the quality of service we were able to provide. Before the upgrade, we had slower speeds. Average customer got 1 to 4 meg service. Our capacity of that backhaul to get bandwidth out there was pretty low. After the upgrade, average customer has 4 to 8 mgs. We were able to create a new business offering, Business Broadband Plus, as a result of this. And those customers, you know, 15 to 25 meg is what they're getting both up and download. Much higher capacity to do a lot more things, kind of future-proof to get more speed out there as we see the need to upgrade our bandwidth from Charter. And since then, our customers are a lot more able to do video streaming like Netflix, voice-over IP services compared to before the upgrade. Business Broadband Plus, that was a side result of our grant project. It's for businesses. They're given a more direct connection to our system. They use the 5-gigahertz band, which has a little less interference. And they're not sharing the same system as our standard business and our residential customers. And we're able to offer them a lot more speed and a little bit, I want to say better reliability, but just some of the old day-to-day things that come up are a little less prevalent in this to give them good service for running a business. And our business park is where a majority of these customers are. We have a few that are downtown, and we've got a couple rural ones that are taking advantage of this service. Just to look at our finances, average monthly income, I don't include setup fees, installation fees, some minor sales equipment, we're averaging around $12,500 right now. We got around $60,000 in cash reserves. And the average monthly cost that our customers pays, $47 a month for service. And that graph's actually a little hard to see, but our costs split out, some minor costs for insurance, some minor costs for, you know, gas for the truck, electric, for some marketing, for our phone costs. That kind of the yellow area, that's about how much we spend each month on equipment and supplies and the things the guys need to do their job day-to-day. The next slice of the pie there, that's basically what the city gets from online for billing services, for reception help upstairs. Some of that money goes to pay for some of my time. The next green spot on there, that's the cost of bandwidth each month. We've got Ralph's time, and then we've got our part-time staffing up there. So that's how the costs get split out to run the utility. Wapakaw Online is self-sufficient. We bring in enough revenue to cover all of our costs. No tax monies used to pay for this operation at all. And in fact, over the years, money has come back to the general fund. Most of that money's come back paying for service, which we get from the city, but some of the money has been given to the city for other projects over that time. But a lot of it, front office staff time, my time, billing time, you know, the streets department gets a little small chunk for working on our junkie truck and keeping that running and in good shape, and some other miscellaneous stuff. And had it not been for Wapakaw Online, the city would have had to find this money elsewhere to supplement the general fund. This year, for those services, we're looking around $21,000. And since Wapakaw Online's inception, we've paid about $260,000 to the city from this operation. Who are our customers? This looks better on my screen. I know it's hard to read. That big, about half of that big red area, that's our rural residential customers. The orange area, that's our in-city residential customers. In-city business, we've got our POPs, customers that are used to distribute internet to their neighborhood, either get a greatly reduced rate or free service depending upon how many customers are connected to one of those towers. And then we've got our Business Broadband Plus and our rural residential, our rural business. Our customer base growth, there was a time where they were pretty close to, I think, about 380 customers. And I don't have data going back that far, but we hit a low point during this period of time where we, I think our lowest we got was about 209 customers in there. And a lot of that was from result of discussion in this room about potentially selling the utility or shutting it down. And we lost a lot of customers out of fear of them losing their internet service. I think over that period of time, we probably dropped 60 to 80 customers in a very short amount of time. And we hit a low point, and we've been slowly rebuilding, so we hit about 209 at one point, and we're in the mid 250s right now. And we've been having a slow but, you know, pretty steady increase since that low point. Some past obstacles Wapakaw Online has faced, the potential sales that we looked at, and that led to a major loss of customers. During that period of time, staff and the utility were basically told not to spend money, so we fell behind on technology, and that's where that state grant helped us to play catch-up and get to where we needed to be. Expenses weren't really looked at at that time, so our expenses ended up exceeding our income with that loss of customers, and it took a while to get that back in line. And during that time, we had a lack of investment. The other obstacle we had was the AT&amp;T contract, which when I think the city signed that, that was a pretty good deal. And what we found with internet, those prices become better and better, and we don't get into long contracts like that anymore. That was about $40,000 payout to get out of that contract. And that sounds like a lot of money, but that was one of the best things we did to keep this utility in a competitive state. And the other thing is there's a lot of negative perception that comes with Wapakaw Online. Some of that was earned, some of that is just people's misunderstanding of it. So those are things we've all worked through. And with some of the struggles and challenges we've had in the past couple of years, we've really come through all of this, and we're still here, and I think we're doing, you know, last year was the first year I felt really good about this operation. We got it into pretty good shape. Some of our current limitations and obstacles, you know, we've got a small budget. I can only afford to have staff on-site about 44 hours a week, so the guys are pretty busy. We've only got part-time staff. There's no full-time staff, and that can make it hard at times. We've attracted some pretty good candidates. They don't stay pretty long, so it can be a little bit of a challenge. Nature's a huge challenge with us. Once trees grew up and get in the way, it makes it hard to get to some of our customers. We've had some long-term customers that love our service, and the trees get too tall, and, you know, there's a point where we just can't serve them anymore. The other limitation is we don't have good after-hours service. We do get some people that get ahold of us through Facebook, and we help them out, but, you know, 8 o'clock at night, there's no one you can call, and that goes back to the small budget and, you know, the smallest staffing that we have. But the network's monitored 24/7, so our network engineer gets alerts if something goes down, and if it's significant. You know, there's been times I've been here at 5:00 in the morning or up at one of the water towers at 9:00 at night, or one of the guys coming in on the weekend to get something fixed as quick as we can. Part of our perception is there's issues with our service, and this kind of addresses some of those common things. Mother nature trees and other obstacles that get in the way. With wireless, there's a lot of frequency coordination that goes in there. We're not the only one using the wireless spectrum. We're in an unlicensed part of the spectrum, so anyone can use it. So there's times where someone else might step onto where we are, and we have to redo things, move things around. Equipment malfunctions with technology, you can have issues. One that I see a lot is we've got customers that'll wait weeks to tell us they're having an issue. They'll struggle with pouring internet for a couple weeks before they call us. And I don't get why people do that, but they get frustrated, and it's like, if you called us right away, we would have fixed this, and you wouldn't have been having these issues. Sometimes the customer's equipment causes issues. Their router goes bad, they have an issue with their computer that causes problems. And some of those customers, there are people out there that just want internet so bad that have no other choices that, you know, we try to avoid it, and it's hard to make that judgment call sometimes, but there's occasions we set people up that probably really shouldn't be one of our customers just because they want internet so bad and they're very marginal. And some of those people stick by, and some of them end up hating us because of how bad the service is, and we mourn them when we hook them up. But there are people out there that want internet so bad that, you know, there are areas out there where it's very hard to get anything. So tying this back to the future, we were approached by Wapaka County to look into some options for getting some broadband expansion into other rural areas in the county. There's a team at the county, Andy Carlin, Ryan Brown, and Dave Teal, that have been studying broadband throughout the county. UW Extension, the leadership Wapaka County class did a survey about this, and they're sharing that data with us. And they talked to a number of other providers and kind of hit some roadblocks with some of these other providers with expanding into rural areas. And they reached out to us to see what our interest level would be in maybe partnering with them or doing some sort of project. And we've been meeting with them and studying that ongoing for about, I don't know, about past three or four weeks. And there are portions of the county that are underserved that we think we can get into pretty well. So you'll be hearing more about that project. Our next meeting with them is tomorrow to continue moving forward on that. PSC, Public Service Commission, just released this year's broadband grant that's due at the end of the month. You'll be seeing our application for approval to apply for that at the next city council meeting, and we're working on getting that project put together. And through, I think, some tights being frugal with our budget, I think, through the income that came in from the last grant project and through some of our growth, our budget has turned around, and we did pretty good last year. And that's put us into a situation where we've got some money to play with, whether we work with the county or not, whether we get a state grant or not, or whether we go out on our own or not. We've got some wiggle room to go out and do some expansion to some of these underserved areas. And that's something we're going to be pushing forward on that. The technology's getting better, it's getting cheaper. It's amazing how inexpensive it is to install equipment on someone's silo and use that as a POP and pick up, you know, six to 10 customers and get them better internet. We can do that for 400 to 600 bucks. If you take a provider that has to run fiber, has to run cables, and I've heard rates anywhere from $10,000 to $30,000 per mile to run cable. So we can get out there quick, get that service out there, and we can afford to bring that service out to a very sparsely populated area. And it's the most cost-effective way to get out to some of those areas. And then the staff that we've got working for Wapakaw Online, Ralph Schmal operates AllNet Consulting, and he's been our contract network engineer since the inception. He knows wireless inside-out. And just through his years of experience, when we run into little problems, usually he has a pretty quick answer for how to deal with it. We don't have to spend a lot of time researching or figuring things out. We've got Chris Johnson, he's been with us. He's on his second tour duty with Wapakaw Online. He was with us, tried real estate and came back, and does a great job. He's got a willingness to climb almost any structure, which is needed in this job, because they spend a lot of time on towers, on roofs, on ladders. And he's very mechanical, and he can come up with creative ways to mount equipment and get stuff put together. Brad Wilson works for us on a very limited part-time basis now. He works full-time for Charter, and internet's a passion of his. He's got a pretty good wireless background and another one that loves climbing, you know, probably our best climber on staff. And then we've got Forrest Peters, who's new to staff. He's been with us a couple months. He's a current networking student at Fox Valley Technical College, and he's just starting to get his feet wet and get into what's going on. And that's one of the things with our staffing is, you know, unless it's someone that just desires to work part-time, it's hard to retain people long-term. And we've been having pretty good luck getting students from either Midstate or Fox Valley Tech who are in IT and networking programs to come intern with us. And some of them have spent six months to a year and a half working with us until they graduate. And, you know, considering the limitations on staffing, I'd rather have someone here short-term that really likes this and really has a good background, and that's kind of what's been working well for us lately with staffing. So that's just a quick update on what's going on, where we are, and if anyone's got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I just had a quick question. When you establish a new POP, how do you actually get that service out there? Does it come from another POP over to?
Most of our POPs either connect back to the Mount Tom or Shamble Wire Tower or the Mount Tom Communications Tower. And then we've got two other POPs in the rural area that we've got sufficient speed getting out to that also act as connecting points to get us into areas that otherwise can't see back to the city.
Is the limitation on the distance between POPs just limited by line of sight?
That's a big part of it, is the line of sight. On a side project I was involved with, I've got a link that's running 18 miles that just is textbook perfect with no problems. I mean, this, some of the potential projects we're looking at with the county, one link on paper looks really good, would be 22 miles that we want to test out. Closer the better, better the line of sight the better, but this stuff can be used long distance and get good result.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Well, Josh, I just want to say I'm a customer, and we're very happy
Thank you.
...with the service especially.
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks.
Brennan, any?
All right. Communications and recommendations to the mayor, I know of none. Brennan, did you want to say something?
I do. I have an announcement for the common council this evening and the entire public. After about working with the DOT for the past five to six months, as of last Friday, we were awarded our standard, or design exceptions request from the DOT, which is maintaining angle parking on Main Street. So we got the award as of last week, Friday, for that. So the preferred alternative that was submitted back in December, January time period, has taken this long to get through, was approved. So I'm excited to hear that from that perspective, and I think, hopefully, the business owners will be excited to hear that as well, that a majority to most of all, the angle parking will be maintained on Main Street as we move forward with the next phase of the projects, which were approved a couple weeks ago, so.
That's great news. Thanks, Brennan. Nice job.
I have to thank not only Henry and Justin working on this, but also our consultants, RDG and SEH. We are one of probably less than five in the state of Wisconsin that has ever gotten this.
Wow.
Standard exception for angle parking and maintaining front-end angle parking. I know that we'll be bringing something back forward here, probably at the next meeting, about the trial pilot program we did for the rear-end angle parking. But to maintain front-end angle parking is extremely rare in Wisconsin, especially for state or federal-funded projects. So it's, I give a tremendous amount of credit to our consultants. It may have seemed like it took a long time, but I think the due diligence and the working not only with the public, but the business owners and the different public meetings that we had to go through those processes helped long-term in getting this request approved.
Gee, just when we're getting used to parking backwards on Union Street.
I'm getting pretty good at it. No, I do, I wanted to thank council because, if you remember, that was one of the reasons we thought SEH was really a good fit for us, because they kind of work in another region of the state, so they understand the process and had some good skill set. So council approved that agreement, so thank you for allowing us to bring them on.
Thank you, Henry and Justin and everybody else involved. That's great work.